We will start the regular meeting of the City Council for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, and you will all stand for the pleasure of the motion.
The message is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. You've had your January twelfth regular work session minutes and regular meeting minutes in your possession. Do you consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, do I hear second?
Are we approving the minutes of the chapters?
What the memorandum of minutes, right?
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
And Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Okay. We've got a meeting agenda and we'll, I guess we might, because there's not many minutes behind. So which happens to the approval of the meeting agenda after it, some of the items in there might have some conditions to them. Do I hear a motion to approve?
You need to ask for approval of the meeting agenda, changing the board appointment to the whole list of members listed on the work session agenda.
As stated by the city manager. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
It's a great pleasure to have swearing in of Mr. William Piper, City of Marl Fire Marshal. We'll have him introduced by the five two.
Dear Mayor, council members, before Mr. Piper sworn in, I'd like to introduce him so everybody has known him a little bit. This is William Piper. William is a true public servant. At age seventeen, he enlisted in Georgia National Army National Guard and became MP and served in that capacity for about six years. During that time, he became a certified firefighter and got hired up for the fire department. And then he became paramedic. So he's been in the fire service about ten years. He reached the rank of captain with his last department before coming to the City of Marl about a year ago. He served with us for the last year as a firefighter and paramedic. Did an outstanding job. So when the fire marshal position came open, he didn't put in for it. A few people did and we went through the process and all that really worked out. And so we were like, well, what are we going to do? We can't find anybody internally to do the fire marshal. And he came to me one day and said, you know, I think I want to do this. He said, I'm ready for any challenge. So he accepted the challenge. He's been in class at Georgia Fire Academy for most of the last two months. Last Friday, he got his Georgia Fire Inspector Certification. And in the spring, he's going to get, he's going to complete his bachelor's degree in psychology. At which point he will certify that we are all crazy. I already know that. But he and his wife Brooke, who are happy as here tonight, live in Forsyth. They have two little girls. So Chief Piper, congratulations on your promotion to Division Chief of Fire Prevention. And I look forward to serving alongside you.
Mr. White, congratulations. Turn over the paper. Turn this around. And I'm just going to read it and tell what was stated by that. Go ahead, please. Okay, the oath of office. Aye, state your name.
Aye, William Piper.
Do solemnly swear in firm.
Do solemnly swear in firm.
That I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
That I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of the Office of Fire Marshal.
The duties of the Office of Fire Marshal.
Of the City of Marl.
Of the City of Marl.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
In accordance with the Charter and all applicable laws.
In accordance with the Charter and all applicable laws.
I do further swear that I am qualified to hold the office.
I do further swear that I am qualified to hold the office.
A fire marshal of the City of Marl.
A fire marshal of the City of Marl.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
And the Charter and Care of the City of Marl.
And the Charter and Care of the City of Marl.
I do further swear that I will support the cares of the City of Marl.
I do further swear that I will support the cares of the City of Marl.
And the fire cares of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
And the fire cares of the State of Georgia. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Gee, should you stand up with a picture?
They're going to try to take a picture. That's the fun part of this job. All right, board appointments, as stated by the city manager earlier. And basically, the new additions would be to appoint Ms. Diane McDonald and to appoint Ms. Claire Van to our planning and zoning board. And in addition to appointing Ms. Nancy Ardis to our urban redevelopment agency. With the addition, and I'll read the terms, to other members. Nancy Ardis has a three-year term from twenty-one to twenty-three. Ronald LaBae has a three-year term from twenty to twenty-two. Elena Reeves has a three-year term from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. And that's you, right? Planning and zoning board appointments, Claire Van, twenty-one to twenty-five. Ms. Tamara Patrus, twenty to twenty-four. Diane McDonald, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Wayne Cox, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Aaron Mulley, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
And Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Mayor, would you like to introduce someone?
Oh, yes, honestly. I think you guys are famous, so it's hard for me to say that. Obviously, we have Ms. McDonald over here a long time. Says, tell us a little bit about yourself, just for those people who may not remember.
White?
No.
Oh, well, I've lived here for close to fifty years. And worked for the Navy at the Naval Air Station, worked for the Army, Army Community Service in different capacities, financial and the last one. And I love the City of Marl. And I hope I can do what I need to do. I have a lot of good neighbors and friends who are longtime friends. And I'm looking around the room and I see a lot of people that I've known for so many years. And I hope I don't let you down. And thank you for not letting me down.
Claire?
I'm Claire Van. I live here for almost ten years, have business here as well. And I love Marl and I hope to see that Marl grow more than what we have now.
Ms. Horace?
I've lived here for twenty-five years. I'm a neighbor to Ms. Dean. And I recently retired from Marl Elementary as a bookkeeper. And I love the city.
That sounds like a ringing thing. We appreciate your service.
Oh, well, yes, should we take a moment to introduce our new city clerk?
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry. So, yes, Stephanie, if you'll stand up. This is Stephanie Tigner, and she has recently been appointed by me as our new city clerk. And so introductions. This is our, these are our illustrious citizens. And of course, you, you may not have even had a chance to meet all your council members yet, but.
Not quite.
So tell us a little bit about yourself so everybody knows.
Stephanie Tigner, been in the city clerk now for about thirteen years. Glad to be here in the City of Marl, personally with some nice people and council members, and ready to give room.
And I think it's important to know that Stephanie actually is a certified city clerk, so we're excited about that.
Blue port, approval of the agreement between the City of Marl and the Marl Convention Association for the designated marketing organization, the authorization for Mayor Lieutenant Tran to execute the agreement and any related documents. And was it a question as to whether there was a condition on that change? Is that an existing condition?
To have a subsequent approval for every budget change?
Yes, right. Okay, so we can make that as part of it. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve?
Was there something else for that, that to look to change?
That and also.
Were there monthly statements or something?
That is the percentage of our.
To be the representative of the agreement between the City of Marl and the City of Marl.
Does anybody else?
I'm not sure what that was.
It's just a, it's a signature requirement, so we could say that it's not authorized. Anybody to sign? There was somebody that had it.
Also, didn't she say something about from quarterly to daily monthly reports?
Yes.
Okay, that's on that. Well, just remember, you can keep monthly reports whether to the agreement or not. So do you want to change that language to say monthly? Okay, that's fine. So let me just make sure I'm capturing this. So the subsequent approval of budget changes, the monthly reporting, not the quarterly reporting. And I'm sorry, you're authorizing who to signature?
We just need to signature it out of the city.
I mean, you can put, they can authorize the signature.
So we authorize the city. Okay, so let's, let's have that. So what we're asking for is the approval of the agreement between the City of Marl and the Marl Convention Tourism Association with conditional section for new changes as well as the monthly reporting requirement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and any related documents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve as stated.
Okay, a motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Now, promoting the city is the good thing, the way the bylaw and the agreement is written is not the best interest for the city and is up here to enable our doing.
Promptly, Ms. Knight?
Aye, Knight.
Okay, so then it basically moves on. The question you have to ask yourself, okay, so let's just say that, that's fine. To collect the tax is the answer. Fine. If it stays in the hotel, in other words, you never collect it, then we've accomplished nothing. If, we have to use a DMO. Most of these would be entities you have no control over whatsoever. They're just entities. So we spent the better part of almost a year creating something that works for us that's having difficulty moving it forward, which we control the books and a number of other things. So if the issue is, we don't have enough information, then I would recommend that we spend the next couple of weeks making sure that your questions are answered. Because you don't have an option of doing nothing. That's not an option. You know, at some point, we're going to have to stop collecting. That's not going to be in your best interest.
So whatever the clarification is needed, can we say that whatever Councilwoman Tran's issues and Councilwoman Knight's issues are, that we address those and see if we can get consensus to move ahead? Sure, yeah. And, and, and just to remember that should the council decide not to collect it, that means our events won't be budgeted. I mean, like, we need to understand that this is what pays for our events.
I'm trying to figure out how to get it.
And for all our businesses.
And promoter businesses.
Which, yeah, one I said, yeah, yeah. So we can, if we can, if I may, Mayor, if we can get something, you know, from the two of them with their concerns, then we can address, you know, we can put it on and discuss and address those issues so that we'll be able to move forward with it?
I'm not saying that some of it is bad thing. I'm not saying that promoting the city is the bad thing. I just see the way the bylaw and the agreement is written, it's not really for the best interest.
I, I would agree with Councilwoman Tran in that for all of the discussion that happened this evening and the points of clarity needed that really haven't been provided substantially. I'm a little confused why it wasn't tabled so that we would have the opportunity to have clear language, clear reading of the agreement and understanding and buy-in rather than kind of post-it note toss out, well, we're going to approve the agreement based on, we're going to add this, take away this. The point of the DMO, we are all very clear on. We're, we're not disputing that. It's just the finer points of planning on the front end that it would be best to have clarity, a clear document that we're reading on the evening that we are going to vote for the agreement. That is my take.
Listen, all right, two weeks. Let's figure out what it's going to take to get the third vote. There really is no option B. You got a third vote that says, I can't, you know, in case of time. So it's not that you don't have a participation, but anyway, without getting into that as a delay, let's just simply say, you know, let's, let's put the parties together that are necessary to answer any question that is necessary. And we will bring this back up in two weeks. And we will. Try again?
Yeah, I'm asking the city to, to work to clear all that concern on the two council members so we can get this thing moving because I would be taking too much time for this.
All right, approval for the Public Works Department, recommended.
Mayor, I'm sorry, the city attorney has a question for you.
Just, I want to make sure that we just, that we articulate what the issues are so we can get those concerns filed or sent to the city manager so she can get that to me to, such that I can be prepared to, I'll respond to those.
Will you reach out?
I guess that's okay.
That'll work. No problem. All right, approval of Public Works Department for the renovation of the proposal of the City's red house. We had some concerns the last time as to what each one of the quotes was. The final quote that was being accepted, and remember, we're having a condition of this which says that they will have a GC, they will have the documents required, and that there's one of the, or what, insurance, an insurance, which is a pretty statement. Do I hear a motion to approve? So move. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
It's a reluctant aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
And Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on. Approval to move forward with Ken.
If I could make a comment?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, if you would, I would like to make a comment. There, there were conversations at the previous meeting. And just for the sake of everyone having that ability to see clearly and buy-in and we know that we're trying to promote what's best for the city. But my question, the last meeting, and my concern the last meeting was that, you know, in approaching things piece by piece, the articulation of the larger picture, we, I have spoken to some council, not all. There is a concern. Are we putting into place fixing what was? Are we reinventing? You know, some thought, some attention paid to what the bigger picture is and communicating it to council and citizens, I think, would be appreciated and appropriate. Of course, we want to make sure that if buildings are going to be used, they're up to par, they're repaired. We understand that, but there's also a vision and a concept question that isn't necessarily clear. But if it's simply stated, well, we're planning to do exactly what was out there, then at, at some point, you know, I, I think that would be important for our citizens to hear as well as the council. So that, that is my concern, but we do need to repair the building.
This is basic repair. Obviously, we'll have at some point, probably some rename process. And I think there was even some concepts laid out there that I haven't done. But I'm just saying, you know, feel free to chime in if you're satisfied. But right now, it's doors and windows, and then to see if we can convince someone to participate with us to, to pick it up from that space and then to put something in. But all of that right now is just good conversation. We all have a long ride that's quite there. We have met with some, and example would be.
Fishers.
Fishers have been, you know, had a really, you know, good discussion with them today. But they're, they're still a little bit behind in terms of what it would take to take that ability forward on their, in other words, we bring the windows and doors back and we paint it. They have a real interest in it. And the question just says, have you done enough homework? And they would say, well, that's getting cost there. That necessarily does. And then what are the terms? Well, until we know what it's going to cost, then, and this basically because the building's been vacant for a while, it's not burning anymore. But yes, I agree. And we've still got a lot of loose ends out there. But we can, we can do a few things at the same time, right? Everything's going to kind of come together. It'll just take a minute.
We can chew and walk. We can, we can chew, gun, and walk at the same time. Is that what they're saying you say?
Is there a motion? But we've got the people to do it.
Going forward, if we can, you know, with the, as with the garden project, Public Works will be doing some of the work. If, if Public Works is doing some of the work at Old Town Marl, what type of work would they be doing other than keeping the grounds and what have you?
Well, at this point, it should be almost just a bit of general maintenance, cutting the grass.
Cut the grass and clearing shrub, you know, overgrowth.
And we know we got some permits to GI that's secondary. But they're not putting anything, you know, deep enough that we're just kind of.
Changing light bulbs, maybe.
It's going to take a second, but we'll get it. All right, approval to move forward with the community garden project based on the cost estimate. You know, under four thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars for the community garden project. SPOX two thousand fourteen funds, as I explained earlier, that's to give us some of the rural ideas. Some of that's going to be done by interim staff or the one that will recover those actual cost dollars of the materials anyway. And then some of that's going to be done by contractors. Those contractors will become back to you, whether it's concrete, that's other things. I want you to go to the board's side. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear second? Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
And Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Approval for the Public Works Department, recommend for the repair of the HPA C system in the Marl Center for Johnson Controls in the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and eighteen cents. And for the approval of the subsequent two-year maintenance agreement in the amount of twelve thousand seventeen. And authorize repair to execute any related documents. We have discussions about that in the work session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Approval for the memorandum of agreement between District Three dash three Clayton County Public Health Park and the City of Marl to establish a community nineteen testing site at fifty-nine hundred Marl Road. And authorize repair to execute any related documents. We've had that for four years. A great opportunity for us to work with our partners. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Motion carries on. Is that first one? It's the second reading.
Second.
So our second reading, obviously, we would have had a first reading last week. The ordinance twenty twenty-one Public Works Supervising Job Description, Pay, Classification, Designation. Second reading of an ordinance to amend the Public Works Supervising Job Description and update the classification of the position. All those in favor, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Mayor, didn't we, didn't we talk about this position last week? We would require certain, the capability to use computer as well to, to run the certain report. But this is what you're saying?
Do we actually write that in?
Well, it was in the recommendation last week, and we heard no questions. So it's, I didn't put the recommendation letter back in. But all of the letter, all of the changes noted in the recommendation letter were made to the job description, which included, you know, basic computer skills, making sure that they were responsible for the storage of all of our equipment and that they had certain amounts of years of lead or supervisor experience.
Lead or supervisor is a couple of words.
Two years.
Two years, yes.
So it sounds like some of the changes that requested, pardon?
All of them.
All the changes that requested. So that actually would be, yes, Ms. Tran?
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Motion carries on. Any comments from the city manager? Comments from the citizens?
Yes. I was noticing the cones that are going across the railroad track or each side. And what is the update on that? Are they going to be made permanent?
That was a traffic accident.
Oh, okay.
There for some reason. I think we're going to go get it. Is that not correct?
Well, it was lined up on both sides of the track.
Yeah, like they extended the, yeah, we can't, they're already there. The cones won't be able to stay there because we can't have delineation up to the railroad tracks. We need to get.
Are they sure? Do we know?
They really do have three lanes turning sometimes up there. I'm turning and here are two more cars right next to me.
I was about to say, this would be a good conversation. I hear what I will say. We know we wrote over twenty citations just over the weekend alone. We know that we took some drugs off the street. We know that we captured a couple of bad guys and went to jail. Got a nice little rap. So I agree, it's not perfect, but I will say that that's progress and we continue that progress. I think that's fair. So, agreed.
Mayor, I apologize. Can Fire Chief give us an update on the vaccine?
Yes, please, please. Mayor, do that, or you all.
Is he here? You, you're, you're about to do it.
He knows more than I do.
Before everybody leaves, people are here.
And this is a real vaccine study.
Unfortunately, we're not able to get the vaccines right now, and we cannot get a clear answer on when we will get the vaccines.
But we're ready. Did we, did we?
We're ready. Freezer?
Our freezer not here, but our agreement's in place with the, with the university.
Yes.
But the good news is, as soon as everything happens, we're ready to go.
Yes.
And that's important to everybody. As soon as it happens, we can, you know, being able to give you real shots and whatever you decide, I guess, the fire department or the community or themselves.
Yeah, it's already set up. We're ready to go. We're just working on vaccines. And honestly, we cannot get a clear answer on when we will.
Is that for citizens as well, those that meet the criteria?
Yes.
Do you have to register? Because that's been a problem.
Yeah.
Well, the register is like the, the public thing where you get in there to do it. In this particular case, they've created a little link. And the register is just simply to put you in order so that they can handle it in a high fashion.
Can we pre-register now?
The only thing we're doing now is a waiting list. And I'll talk to Chief Moss about putting that out. We've been hesitant because we don't know when it's going to happen. We've got a thousand people on waiting lists. We don't want a thousand people in a waiting list, and we have to contact, so we're kind of...
But more importantly, we don't want you seeking, not seeking the vaccine somewhere else, awaiting hours when we have no idea when it's coming.
Just like everybody else in the state, everybody's getting a little bit, right? So in this one, it's not going to go, we're not knocking, you know, knocking out the entire City of Marlboro, right? So some of those folks that are of a certain age, you know, step up to the plate because we want to get you done. And, you know, there's some others that, in different states, that, you know, maybe they didn't wait, right? That's probably not fair, but that's how it works.
On the news tonight, they said that it's distributed by how many people you have in your state. So the larger states are getting more than the smaller states.
Well, in some of those, you have to try to...
I'm not sure they even know that.
Break it a lot, let's put it that way. There's a lot of move out there to say you're not as important as they are, and I'm just saying, I don't know if you disagree with that, but we're ready, we're at the click, and we're going to go. Whenever we get them, we're going to go, there's not going to be a plan B. There's nothing that this city council can do, everything's green light, whatever they need, they got.
Is that citizens of Marlboro specific or outside people?
It'll be for anybody. We're not able to restrict it to just the citizens.
But most people don't really like read our website.
And have you been assigned a specific one, John?
Moderna.
Moderna.
Any other comments from the session?
I have one. Mayor, council, since same reference to the DMO, I think it's important that we, we resolve whatever issues we have with DMO. We all know the history with the DMO that we've had in previous two, and for us to hold up that hotel motel tax money for, for some issues that we can't discuss and resolve, it's going to hurt the citizens, it's going to hurt the services and the businesses in the city. So we need, I think we need to take a good look at not confusing the internal governmental agreement with the bylaw of the DMO, two totally separate entities. And I feel if mayor and council have the ability, if there are calls in the agreement to terminate the DMO for cause, that should suffice. And once they submit that budget and this approved, once you go through those line items in that budget, you know, the funds are already allocated, and I really wish we can get come together and come to a resolution on that, because that's going to impact the city. And one other thing, Mayor, I'm going to sit down, I've been watching you guys' calendar as far as events is concerned, and I remember previous events that we've held in the city. We've had three Lunar New Years, we've had Walking Dead, or whatever it is, whatever.
Day of the Dead.
Day of the Dead. We've had Cinco de Mayo, and now we're putting St. Patrick's Day on, on the calendar, but you haven't had not one single day to recognize African Americans in this city. Every ethnic group in the city has been recognized, with the exception of African Americans. We did not even recognize King Day in this city, so we need to do a better job.
Dorothy, you want to talk about Juneteenth?
Well, that is a, I would equate that to Lunar New Year, that's heritage, so to speak, and it's like Day of the Dead is sort of, you know, your culture, celebrating your culture. Martin Luther King's birthday would be recognizing someone who has done, you know, civil rights and all of that. So Cinco de Mayo is, well, Independence Day, I believe, for...
Juneteenth is Independence Day for African Americans in the great state of Texas. I'm talking about, we're coming up on Black History Month. We haven't celebrated African American history in this city. We've celebrated every other ethnic group, with the exception of African American.
I vote to put rain in charge.
I do believe that Juneteenth was an opportunity to try to do that. There was, there was a couple of different events that they were combining, you know, we're using the terminology there, and I believe some of that was cultural in terms of a number of different things. I can't speak to all the facts as to what's been portrayed in that group, but I think it should be, you know, the city proud. And without having done the event in the past, all I can say is, you know, the door's wide open, and we get to set the tone, and the tone of hope is going to be a little, and I think we've got to let people in charge of making it happen. I certainly don't know anything that's standing anywhere. If it is, we'll get it out there. But good point. Other questions, citizens? Mr. Cherry?
On that DMO thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that if people had that many questions, they should have been asking Sylvia and have her talking to the attorney to get their questions answered before spending as much time as we spent on this thing, because we all know we need a DMO. And I'm sorry, but you cannot hear these people, they're up here on the full screen, and I think they all need to be in here in this meeting. We can social distance, and there is room enough for them to not even be near anybody and be in this room.
I hear your point. I don't admit that I want to be in a position to require them to be here. We know there's always a risk, and I think that person has to make that decision. We meet with all kinds of Zoom calls, we meet with all kinds of people, and if Dorothy June is to be here, that's wonderful, if she wants to sit there, that's great, if she wants to sit in the back of the room, that's great, if she wants to sit in the hallway, that's great, if she wants to sit beside me, love that, right? But that's, she might not love that. But the point being is, is, you know, I think you have to give some independence, that there's some real risk to this, each person being slightly different, and without going through all the details as to what their personal risk would be, I think we have to give them the benefit of the doubt, but we do appreciate the comments. Other comments from the citizens? Comments from the city council?
Yes, sir. If I may respond to Ms. Chris, the reason some things, as tonight, it's like a prescription, if I say Cherry, you can take my aspirin, you don't want to take it from me because I'm not a doctor. So the thing is, is that we want to fully understand the legal perspective, and only the attorney can give it up here, because we can't one-on-one, you know, so that's why it took as long as it did, and thank you all for sitting through it, and I think we all have a, and I'm better understanding. And sometimes it's going to take this, you know, for everybody to get on the same page, you know. Sometimes we might not be in the same book, but we're working to get to the same book and be in the same chapter on the same page, so that's what we're trying to do.
I have another question. Where's the money? Has anybody been collecting it, or is it just sitting somewhere?
City council.
We don't want to lose it.
You both, okay. Other comments from the city council?
I'd like to say welcome to Stephanie and also to our new fire marshal. Yay.
Ms. Knight, any questions? Comments?
No questions. I did comment, I did want to say welcome to Stephanie, looking forward to working with you. Welcome to the new fire marshal, we appreciate that you're willing to step up to the plate. And also with regard to Black History Month, Mr. Collins, I'll reach out to you, I was contacted and threw out a dart to Sylvia with regard to the possibility of an event, so it is on the radar. Somebody's computer is going crazy. It is on the radar, but it's just a matter of planning and always needing ample hands to assist with planning.
Ms. Tran?
Ms. Chris.
No comment.
No comments.
Is his name?
My comments, yeah, as we kind of are walking into, you know, the next year, right? You're going to start to see some timelines, you know, budget calendars, things like that as we start moving forward, right? There are probably going to be some differentiation at some point real soon with our work session as we start to kind of create an appendix, would be the idea, because our list of projects for both economic development and the Public Works Director and a few other things is going to get fairly long. So I don't want everyone to kind of look at that as it's wrong, or that's our to-do list, we have to do it, but we'll create an appendix, and then from that is going to be something that's going to be a little bit more about what we're talking about. We're not quite there yet, but we're pretty close. So this time last year, if you will, you know, we didn't have more money, we didn't have an economic, we didn't have a marketing person. We're still working on a DMO, for example. We spent a lot of time trying to shore things up to be able to make it so we're happy to be able to do something, right? So our next step as we move forward is now we've got to be able to move at a little bit faster clip, not missing the important parts that are necessary to you, but in the theory of being able to chew gum and walk at the same time, you know, econ's going to have a series of things, they're going to be important to you. Public Works is going to have a series of things, they're going to be important to you, and that's what's going to make us start to separate ourselves later, and then I'll end that, go right into the work session, but meeting is adjourned.